If I forget.
Alright, you guys ready? Are you guys ready over here?
Ready?
We're not ready.
You're not ready? Oh yeah, I haven't heard the reporting in progress of it. Here it is.
There it is.
Ready to go Lindsay?
Yep.
Alright, here we go. We will go ahead and call to order City Council Regular Business Meeting for Thursday, December nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four. It is six P M. Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Mineke.
Here.
Mayor Phillips.
I am here as well. We do have a quorum, so we'll move on. Uh, item number two is a pledge of allegiance. Would you please rise and say the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the people of the United States of America. And to the republic of the citizens, one nation, under God, and the mission with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, next was approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Hearing now, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion seconded.
Motion by Baker, seconded by Cool. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those both same. And that motion carries. Item number four, welcome guests and public comment. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your participation in our meeting. Uh, at this point in time, we'll go up, go ahead and open up the dais for anybody wants to talk about or address council about a non-agenda item. Uh, realize we can't take any action on those tonight since it's not on the agenda and that would be a violation of open meetings law. And we'll give you three minutes. So as I said, it's for non-agenda items. Anybody want to address council? Hearing none, we will move on. Item number five is consent agenda. Tonight we have expenditures, uh, tax abatements. We have the December fifth twenty-four, twenty twenty-four minutes of the regular city council meeting. We have a new Class C retail alcohol license for mullets. We have a new Class C retail alcohol license for Sunset Lounge. We have a resolution approving pay estimate number five and change order number two to M M C Contractors Iowa for the Public Safety H VAC project. We have a resolution approving pay estimate number four to G T G Construction for the Norwalk City Hall renovation project. We have a resolution approving Beanstra and Kim Engineering Contract Amendment Number One for North River Interceptor and Truck Sewer Extension Project. Uh, we have a resolution approving a supplemental agreement number three for additional construction services for Iowa twenty-eight Sunset Drive and Beardsley Street Intersection Improvements Project. We have a resolution approving contract with the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance to administer the Norwalk Rehabilitation Assistance Program. Let's see, we have resolution to approve a twenty-eighty agreement with Polk County Fire and E M S for mutual aid assistance. And resolutions approving pay estimates for the Norwalk Fieldhouse Project. There's a couple of those. Uh, we have a resolution appointing City of Norwalk representatives to the Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority. We have a resolution appointing representatives to various boards and commissions for calendar year twenty twenty-five. We have a resolution approving acceptance of the assistance to firefighters grant and the purchase of accessories, soft-contained breathing apparatus, equipment. We have a resolution approving commercial improvement grant application for Harvey's Automotive. Got monthly reports and correspondence. Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Mineke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston. Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item six is old and new business for consideration, discussion, and possible action. Item A is a public hearing regarding the annexation of approximately twenty-nine hundred acres of property uh, southwest of the city limits into the city of Norwalk. So we'll open up public hearing at six oh three P M. So in twenty eighteen, Norwalk City Council, uh, set a ten-year goal to expand the commercial and industrial tax base to thirty percent. As a result of that goal, the city started, uh, planning process to encourage development in certain key areas of the city. Uh, one of those areas is property south and west of the current city limits. Uh, with council leadership and direction, major accomplishments have been made toward making a southwest commercial industrial corridor a reality. These accomplishments include, uh, number one is the purchase of Serenity Woods Park. Uh, in early twenty twenty-one, city purchased approximately twenty-two-hundred-twenty acres of land at a very fair favorable cost with the understanding that would be needed for the placement of a sanitary trunk sewer line. And will eventually make a very nice, uh, natural preserve area for use by the public. Number two, uh, the city completed a new comprehensive plan, including the southwest corridor, demonstrating the city's intent. Excuse me, intent regarding the planned development area. Countless hours were spent consulting with property owners, neighboring jurisdictions, Warren County, and other stakeholders. City planning staff also volunteered time to be involved with the, uh, Warren County Comprehensive Planner to ensure the county and city plans work together and did not conflict, conflict with each other's plans. Uh, number three, the city council authorized engineering studies for transportation corridors and utility needs for future development. Additionally, the, the design and engineering of a southwest trunk sewer line was authorized. Uh, number four, as a result of the partnership developed between the city and Warren County, county provided a one-point-four million dollar grant to participate in the construction of a trunk sewer line. Uh, number five, after the successful marketing and completion of the city's first certified industrial site, uh, the city marketing efforts concentrated on the, on the southwest corridor area. As a result of those efforts, uh, the area already has improvements serving a forty-acre industrial site with approximately seventeen million dollars of improvements with an expected forty to fifty million dollar ultimate build out. Number six, the city staff and elected officials continued to meet, negotiate, and develop relationships with landowners in the area. Realtors, developers, utility companies, local state and federal government representatives, industry representatives, and other interested parties to make the southwest corridor a reality. Number seven, uh, continued city marketing efforts have, have made the entire area attractive for development and have garnered attention from interested parties nationwide. Number eight, the city recently completed the purchase of thirty additional acres for seven-hundred thousand dollars, which included obtaining, uh, utility easement rights and road right-of-way rights to serve expansion into the future. Uh, number nine, the city recently entered into a contract for approximately ten million dollars for the first phase of the southwest trunk sewer. Uh, this was after many months of planning and involved engineering, uh, land acquisition, extensive easement negotiations, and negotiations with the federal government regarding, uh, N R C S easements. This sewer, when completed, uh, will serve thousands of acres extending into Madison County and benefiting multiple jurisdictions. So because of all these accomplishments, along with others, property owners within the southwest corridor area have experienced unprecedented demand for their develop, undeveloped properties at prices that could not have been achieved in years past. As a culmination of all efforts above, the, the council will consider tonight a voluntary annexation that was for approximately twenty-nine hundred acres of land. Uh, this annexation, annexation will extend south and west of the current city limits, extending west to Interstate thirty-five and actually to the Madison County line. Uh, all of the owners of the property in the proposed annexation area, with the exception of one, have requested to be annexed into the city. Uh, the one non-consenting owner owns one hundred and thirty-four acres within the annexation area. City representatives received very positive results with the landowners and with many of them recognizing the investment being made by the city and understanding the effect the, the investment has on their individual properties. One last comment I would like to share, uh, since we began this annexation product, process, we've had several property owners that requested to annex additional land. Uh, we accommodated those requests as best we could without creating islands. Further, to this day, we continue to have requests of adding land to, uh, the Norwalk City Limits. Our two most recent requests came a little late to include in this annexation process. Uh, council, you're likely going to see additional annexation requests in the near future. So the resolution approving landowner applications, proving voluntary annexation of property has a number of findings in it. We'll see though. Those are in the resolution. Uh, Luke, would you pull up my presentation? So we went through and, and talked to all the landowners and I'd like to go through that, the presentation or it's just a slightly abbreviated presentation that we did with all those landowners that we, that we invited to come in. So and it's, uh, so we asked, we told them why we were there at that, at the meeting. So we asked them to participate in a voluntary annexation into the city. Uh, we wanted to provide all the information that we had to them and allow them time to ask us questions. Uh, we did not want them to have a decision the day that we, that we met. We wanted them to go back, think about it, maybe consult an, an attorney so that they, they knew what they were getting into as far as their decision goes. Uh, we need to propose preserve our growth area. We're investing a ten million dollar, ten million dollars for the North River Sewer Interceptor. So we want, that's a lot of money. Uh, so we needed, we decided to go ahead and annex out to Interstate thirty-five to protect that investment. At the same time, we had a private company that's, uh, going to purchase about three hundred acres down uh, between Norwalk and, and the North River, and they requested to be annexed into the city. So because of that request, we, you know, we were already going to do this annexation. It just accelerate that, the request from the, from the company just kind of accelerated our process of getting it done. Next slide. So we went through an agenda. We decided we were going to talk about what annexation is. Uh, give them some summary and background information, give them time to have questions and comments, and tell them what the next steps were. So Jim, I'm going to let you do the talk on what is annexation.
Okay, well basically annexation is the, uh, process of a city changing its city boundaries. Um, and there are different types of annexation, but basically what that is, that brings it within the city limits. What it's not is the city condemning property. It's not the city purchasing property. It's not city dictating the property owners' power, when they can use their property. Uh, there are, I guarantee you, there's property owners within this annexation area that don't plan on developing their ground. They continue to want to hunt on it and maybe, but they would recognize the value uh, of being within the city and understand that, you know, someday that va, they can realize their value or their kids can realize the value or, you know, whoever it is that someday sells that property. If they don't ever sell it, they can keep continuing, you know, perpetually the way they are down there. Um, so basically this annexation is considered a voluntary annexation. It's not a hundred percent like the mayor recognized. There's, there's one landowner that, uh, doesn't want to, doesn't want to enter voluntarily, which is okay. Uh, but Iowa code also recognizes that, uh, up to twenty percent of a proposed annexation area uh, can be included in an annexation and so have it considered voluntary. There's certain conditions that are required, uh, for that. Uh, and, and we feel the city has met, has met those conditions. And I think we'll probably go over that here in a while in a little bit more detail, but right now, uh, I believe a little over ninety-six percent of the proposed annexation areas voluntary where we've received, you know, annexation applications from the owners.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and one thing that's on this slide that I want to point out is that our goal was not to annex any, any homes. We just wanted undeveloped land. Uh, we wanted to minimize any tax, uh, property tax implications on the property owners as much as we could. So, uh, bare ground, the, the property tax did not change very much. It is going to increase a little bit, but uh, if there was a home on the property, we tried to go around it because that was going to be a, a pretty major impact on property taxes. We didn't want to hear. Next one. Uh, so during annexations, the cit, the, the city typically works with property owner to develop what's called an annexation agreement. And that annexation agreement memorializes the u, the current uses of the property and allows them to continue after they, after they've been annexed into the city limits. Uh, this also provides opportunity for the transition to taxes. Like if we were going to bring in a house and there was going to be a big increase in property taxes, you could put it into your annexation agreement that that increase could be incremented over a period of ten years. Okay? Uh, and we ca, we calculated and we'll go through one of those calculations on how the taxes were going to change if we, if they annexed into the city. Uh, and this is a picture of the actual annexation boundaries. Luke had that up there before, but it, the, inside the, uh, yellow or gold box there is the entire annexation area that we are talking about today. So some summary and background, uh, we had a previous comprehensive plan and future land use map. That was approved in twenty twenty, twenty sixteen, sorry. Uh, it didn't really contemplate any infrastructure investments on the southern portion of the city. Uh, our City of Norwalk, uh, twenty-two, twenty forty comprehensive plan was approved in twenty twenty-three. And it recognized the growth potential of the North River Interceptor Sewer City can, uh, we, we got a new comprehensive plan to understand how the city might grow along the North River. And a new future land use, use map was created to identify the growth patterns clear out to Interstate thirty-five. And this is what that looks like. Uh, you'll see contemplated, uh, growth out, out to there like, uh, if you can see like yellow on that map is like single-family homes, low-density residential, uh, the, let's see, I'd say it's a rust color there out towards the, on the left side. That would be more commercial development. And there's some gray that goes along, along the North River. That would be all industrial. Uh, so the city recognized the need to build the North River Interceptor to accommodate some immediate industrial growth needs south of Delaware. This caused the city to investigate potential long-term impacts of installing a large sixty-inch, uh, sewer along North River. And I think it's actually going to be seventy-two inches. So it's a big pipe. Uh, we've talked to City West Des Moines. We've talked to the City of Coming to let them know what, what we're doing. The ultimate service area of this sewer pipe is going to be fifteen thousand acres. So it extends within our boundaries and it, it can actually service up into, uh, quite a bit of Madison County. Oh yeah. And yes, we've, we've also, uh, talked to the school districts, both Norwalk School District and Marchdale School District, since our annexation boundary, our annexation is, uh, contains land within both of those school districts. And we've talked about to Warren County about the annexation as well. And gave them pretty much this pre, this same presentation. This map shows, like the green line there shows the current direction of the growth of Norwalk. And then that, the dotted line underneath there is a estimate, and it's a really, really rough estimate of where the sewer, North River Sewer Interceptor is going to go. And you'll see there, there's a, there's a red arrow there that says that's, that's the end of that first phase. That's where that ten million dollars investment that we're going to make is going to get that sewer pipe to. Uh, so as far as transportation goes, we needed to understand the transportation, transportation needs of that growth area. Uh, there's going to be a major arterial, arterial road that's going to be needed that goes from Highway twenty-eight clear out to Interstate thirty-five. Uh, more than likely, the connection to the Interstate, Interstate thirty-five will be at Fillmore. And there will put a future interchange at that location. But there's several routes that the, that the engineering studies showed. And this map shows, I hope you can see it all, uh, shows the different routes that the engineers came up with. You can see that, uh, a lot of it starts it on the right side there at Delaware. Goes for a little while to the west, then kind of blobs out into several different routes. Then most of them come back down into Dubuque for a little ways and then expand back out for a while. And then all of them end up down on Fillmore. Uh, one of them, well, all but one goes down to Fillmore. There's one that actually goes across, uh, a little, little farther north than Fillmore. This map kind of shows everything and, and realize the, the annexation focus area on here is, is old.
I'm saying.
Uh, if you look uh, to the right there, the orange line there shows the, uh, proposed sewer. And then it's just a map that shows, uh, the transportation corridor there. It starts at Delaware, kind of goes to the west a little bit. I said there's a blob, it's to Dubuque, it's another blob down south to Fillmore. And all of those blobs and I, and, and the route of that is all going to be developed, developer-driven. We don't know where that's going to go exactly, uh, and won't know until developers actually have plans to go through there. And there are, they're really for past, past Delaware, there's really nothing right now. This is of developer-driven. What was that? As developers purchase land and plan out their development, they'll come back to the city and, and show where their, where those lines are going to go. Good question. Yeah. Uh, this shows a little bit about like one of the landowners, uh, up above as in court, unincorporated county, excuse me. Uh, there's a couple agricultural grounds there, shows what their valuations there are and their current per month, uh, property tax bill. And then if you look down on, at the city's portion, it shows the same agricultural lines there. Uh, you'll see their per month property tax bill. And like the first line there with it, tax, their property tax bill went up a dollar nineteen per month. The other, uh, parcel, their property tax bill went up sixty-six cents per month. So we're not talking a whole lot of dollars as far as an increase goes. So our next steps, we, we followed up with this, with a letter to all the residents after, after we met. Uh, we asked them to, uh, sign a voluntary annexation agreement with us. And our, as it says there, our city's goal is to complete the annexation to Interstate thirty-five. We said before the end of the year, it's probably going to be, finish up around March, April timeframe. Uh, again, this is not about acquiring land. This is not about eminent domain. This is just changing the borders of the city. And I think that's it. That was the last one. So at this point in time, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. And this is the time for citizens and property, property owners to make comments. Uh, it's not intended to be a dialogue with elected officials. Uh, we're here to listen to your comments and take them under advisement as we move through the annexation process. So I'll open it up for any public comment on this item. You want to come on up? And when you come up, uh, when you get up here, please state your name and your address and make your comments. And we'll give you three minutes.
Alright. Um, good evening. My name is Carrie Kearney. I live at fifty-nine twelve Twenty-Fifth Avenue, kind of the little notch there on the western part. Um, I'm here to ask the council, I know it's just comments, to reconsider or at least postpone decision on this annexation. I understand there's been a lot of work, but there are problems with it. According to the Iowa code, annexation of land should be considered if the proposed land is contiguous to the existing city boundaries, not a flagpole or strip annexation. A flagpole or strip annexation is when a city includes a long, narrow strip like this one does to connect the larger area to existing boundaries. It's a way for cities to skirt the rules, so to speak. And the city, I spoke to former city development board members who said this could likely not be approved by them. Um, cities are generally supposed to focus on developing within their existing city limits before they annex more land. And if you look at the current city limits, there's a lot of potential for development that has not been utilized and should be before you eat up more farmland. According to the new comprehensive plan, part of this annexation is for high and medium-density housing, but it's along the I thirty-five corridor, which makes no sense. The high-density housing is critical, but it should be within the urban core, close to amenities that are walkable, not six or more miles away. Development in, in much of the area on here is a bad idea because it's mostly floodplain and highly erodible land. For example, along the area on Fillmore where you're talking about an interchange, this is floodplain. Part of those fields south into the northeast are underwater, a good part of the springtime, almost every year since I've lived there. Also, right there on the corner of Fillmore and Twenty-Fifth is a wetland. There's another wetland in the area and those should not be developed. Right now you have proposed medium-density housing right over top of the wetland. That shouldn't happen. Before you move forward, I urge you to look at this proposal, go back and address some of these problems, but also meet with the residents who actually live here, who didn't get talked to at all, and work with us to mitigate the harm to our quality of life and our properties, such as thinking about buffers between our farms. I raise sheep. I don't need city dwellers coming over and cutting my fence or petting my sheep, thinking that's cute. You need to limit light pollution and noise pollution. We don't need another data center or Hy-Vee that have their lights on twenty-four-seven, which is harmful for people and our animals. Um, you need to develop plans to protect the water quality, reduce, reduce erosion and drainage and the impact on our property and protect the floodplain and the wetland. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. Turning this, reaching the curve.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Eli Primakov. I live on Fillmore to two-four-seven Fillmore Street, Norwalk. I'm also on speaking opposition of this. Uh, I was, I lived in Des Moines downtown. I moved out in the country to be away from the city. Now the city is creeping into my space. Um, when you say there is not going to be tax increase, I think it's a bunch of nonsense. There will be a tax increase eventually, um, when you start developing that area. Um, as, as it is, I'm paying a lot of taxes. You know, having lots of acres is going to impact me a lot. Um, also you said something about protecting your investment because such a big sanitary line. Who's going to protect my investment? I want, moved out there, my, my value is going to go up, but that's not what I want. I want taxes to go down. If you can, if you can get my taxes down, I don't care what the value is. You know what I mean? So I am really opposition about that. Um, also, um, there's many reasons that, uh, like Norwalk has a bunch of land that's open right around them. But you're creeping in way where, where we like eight minutes or ten minutes away from them. Why don't you talk to the farmers that right next to the, to your city limits, huge fields that not developed? So that's my opposition. There's other reasons I wanna, I, I could speak of, but I'll, I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Anybody? Anybody else?
Mike Elgin, fifty-nine ninety-five Twenty-Fifth Avenue. Contacted FEMA, looked at their maps, floodplain maps and everything else. Uh, I've got a hundred acres that is in federal wetlands permanent easement. Um, right there on the corner of Fillmore and Twenty-Fifth Avenue. Uh, I've seen it flood when I first moved out there, five times in four years. In the recent years, it'll flood five times in one year. And when you're talking about on Fillmore, um, being a industrial area. Where does the runoff go? Goes into the river, goes on top of my land and gets flooded, goes on down to the properties and cities south of my property, Norwalk, et cetera. That's in a permanent easement. And there's a reason why our ancestors didn't build roads there is it didn't make any sense. Um, I do find an objection to the land largest, and he's not a permanent um, previous landowner on Fillmore, but he is the president and C E O of Citibank. And he was purchasing the last of the land on Fillmore in October of twenty twenty-one. And as you stated, all these plans came up in twenty twenty-two. I kind of find that it's a conflict of interest because he really doesn't have any skin on the game, in the game. That's Steve Albright. So I know you folks all know him, no doubt. Uh, nothing personal against him, but he seems to be a profiteer that hopefully this gets spearheaded and ends up, and I talked to the previous owner, Gary Weedman, just three days ago. And he said he was approached by Mr. Albright and was made an offer that he couldn't refuse in October of twenty twenty-one. He had an old four oh one K program, uh, that was his mother's property. And he said, done. I need the money to retire. The other property I'm concerned about is Saint Patrick's Church, which nobody has bothered mentioning, but sits just across the road on, uh, tenth. On uh tenth Avenue, rest just across the road. You walk out of the chapel and. You guys wanna watch have it industrial park, uh, commercial area, and that's an historical landmark. So, uh, that's sacred ground and it's also protected ground. And the definition of, you know, there is zoning and land use regulations in Iowa and they talk about the corporate one and. Uh, agricultural and residential, but they have historical. And I didn't bring my glasses up, but the last line talks about, um. Public. Can you read that for me? Well, I've, I've got my telephone.
This, this. I could read it. Yeah. If you wanna, if you wanna finish up this one, it's your, your time's out.
Gonna have essential tremors, and so that's why I shake.
Yeah.
Down for twenty years. So. The uh zoning and land use regulations, you got commercial and industrial zoning. This type of zoning regulates the development and use of commercial and industrial properties such as office buildings, shopping centers and factories. That's what you're talking about, putting in the flood zone between. Badger Creek and North River, you know, skipper agricultural zoning.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna call time on.
Okay, I'm gonna read this last part for. Historical district zoning. This type of zoning protects historic areas from new developments that could alter the character or charm. Okay. Walking out of Saint, in nineteen seventy nine. Pope John Paul visited that church, if you're not aware of it. Everybody here that's from this area would have been. And that's the only church he bothered visiting west of the Mississippi. So that's why it's an historical landmark.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, come on up.
Though I am opposed to this, I do commend the city for their.
Matthew, will you state your name and address, please?
Matthew Clark, fifty two oh eight forty fifth Avenue. I would like to thank the city for some interest, but when it goes beyond my property. Uh, now that it was mentioned that. Uh, twenty percent of the area along Interstate is owned by the city state bank and Mr. Menick, he should probably recuse himself from the vote. Uh, I tried to ask the city before, what are you going to do with all that land? Why you want something bigger than the city? Uh, I really think it's like a, a ten or twenty years from now thing, but it's, it's quite a plan. Uh. I don't really know what to think of it. It's, you know, I like the thought of the. The drainage going out, uh, just west of me a little ways and uh. It looks to me like the city plans on putting in a, a sewer system down to service of the bank and. All that's all owned by all their friends, all that of the forty nine hundred acres, probably. Two thousand of it's owned by those few investors that are all pretty close. Uh. I think that's kinda neat in one hand, but on the other, I think that there's a, they should have bought land closer to town. Uh, Tim Stark, Timothy Stark just sold a hundred and twenty acres at County Line and fiftieth. And he got less than thirty thousand dollars in acres. I think that the bank should have sold their land down there and bought that land if they want somewhere to invest. I think that it would be a lot, make a lot more sense up there. I do like the idea of the city going west along Fillmore. I think Fillmore needs to be paved. Uh, the semis are coming down because they don't wanna go through town. They go down fiftieth as fast as they can. Then fly up uh Fillmore. And that's kind of a bad, but um now you've all probably, I didn't receive any response, but. I did oppose my annexation in part. Uh, there were some different reasons. One, they would never tell me what all that's for. And then upon the first meeting, I was told that I could uh sell quarter acre lots. If I wanted to sell a little land when you need money, I'm getting older. I'll never live long enough to see all this happen. Uh, but I contacted the city in zoning and no one would ever re- respond in writing that I actually could sell lots. Cause I figure once I'm in the city limits, you're gonna tell me what I can and can't build and I'll probably get turned down by somebody else is building a lot, a big development somewhere. But uh, I did object in writing, and I know you're not supposed to talk about it if you already objected in writing, but I just wanted to make sure and plead with the council that. My property falls outside of the scope of the twenty percent. It would not prevent, uh, it would not cause islanding. There's a, a strip of land on my south end that would prevent islanding. The state can pass that. They have to pass it by law. And it would not, uh, the shape everywhere is so irregular that it would not, uh.
I'll, 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 I'll let you finish your last thought.
It would not make it un-uniform.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else?
Can I just ask a quick question? The maps that you sent.
You bet. And and as, as I said before, this isn't really a dialogue. No, I understand, but the city sent out.
Please state your human address, please.
Five six five two sixty first lane, Dennis Johnson. Okay, thank you. And I'm looking at this map, which is totally different than that map, and this is dated and it been sent out to us prior to this meeting. And I specifically would call attention to the area just at Highway twenty eight and Elkhorn Street. I'm trying to determine, is it part of the, uh, is it part of it or not? But your map shows it's not. So there, there's a, that's where Serenity Woods is, and because the city owns Serenity Woods. Uh, we quite frankly forgot about it. To put it in the official, uh, we originally had thirty two hundred acres. It was, it's now down to twenty nine hundred. Cause Serenity Woods is not in this one. Uh, it will be in, probably be in the next one. So this map is correct that you sent out to us showing what you're calling Serenity Woods, what I'm calling swamp land and floodplain. The, it is. The map on the screen is the, the most current correct map. But, and again, for clarification, you're saying that that's gonna change likely to this map and include that? Cause it looks like, that's where the trunk line. Not, not, not for this annexation. That will be on the next annexation if we ever do, when we do it. But from your PowerPoint. You, your original map that you're holding in your hand included the Serenity Woods. Since that time, that has been removed from the annexation area. It will be included next time there's an annexation that happens. Okay. And. PowerPoint that you showed earlier, is that available on the city website? Because it was showing the map for the trunk lines, for the sewer line. And then we're going, going right through Serenity Woods. Yes, it, it is. It, it is going to go through. So you are gonna annex it there. Eventually, but since the city owns it, we can still put the trunk line through there now. Okay. Okay. Guess that I, I have so many questions, but I guess who would I reach out to then? You can email me. Yeah, I can give you a business card here. Great. Great. Cause I'm, I'm more confusing when I got here. Anybody else? Once. Only twice. Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments?
None other than um from Matthew Clark, and he stated that when he spoke.
Okay. Uh, okay, so. Mr. Clark, one of the things that you said, uh. In one of your, in one of your emails, it says that if this, if the city in fact does approve Clark as voluntary. It extend by each listing, all zoning variance is granted to the persons who sign voluntarily, be granted to Clark. Uh, would you be willing to sign a voluntary annexation agreement tonight? No? Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at six thirty eight PM. Item B. Six B is a resolution approving landowner applications, approving voluntary annexation of property, Southwest Annexation twenty twenty four. So we just had a public hearing for the annexation. Uh, one thing I wanna say is, is that along the North River. I think the city's hopes are going to be that within most of that floodplain, it's going to be a linear park along the, along the North River. And you don't have to worry about the, about, about the flooding since it will be in a park. Jim, Luke, Luke, Holly, Lindsay, do you have anything to add? The only thing that I will add is that um I have fielded some individual questions with property owners as far as a mile west of Interstate thirty five. Uh, if anybody has questions, you can email me. You can call me. My cell number is on that business card. There's other business cards up front. We would love to answer all the questions we can. Alright, any discussion comments from council?
A number of things. So I just wanna clarify that with the exception of Mr. Clark, everybody who spoke today is not within the annexation area, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And. Um. This discussion is about annexation. It is not about correction. It is not about. What might eventually be developed, correct?
Correct.
It's not about how things may or may not be zoned now or in the future, correct?
Correct.
It's not about, um. The comprehensive plan and how it may or may not be changed in the future, correct?
Correct.
Cause what I heard from several people who spoke about this was, you know, you're gonna build this, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that. And right, that's not today's discussion. And I understand, right? I all, I say often, right? I don't wanna do things in a bubble. But. We don't know yet what is gonna happen with the area. Cause I understand it, part of the reason that we're not. That we focused on this area is because, right, the things we're already doing, the things we already talked about, but also the benefit to the city. To have a connection to and land at Interstate thirty five.
Correct.
Um, okay, then the other thing I want to ask is, um, can we? Do we know the answer? Can we put to rest this concern? Does City State Bank own any of that land down by Fillmore? Do we know?
They do not.
Oh. Does Steve Albright own any of that land over by Fillmore?
Yes, he does.
Okay. And so. And so to the extent that. Council member Minicki is a member employed with the bank. Jim, maybe you should weigh in. I don't really, I don't see that he has a conflict because the bank doesn't own this property and what his. Former, right, former CEO, um, or whatever his exact.
He's chairman, chairman of the bank.
Okay.
It's not the same ownership of the land and the bank.
Sorry?
The land that you're talking about that Steve has an interest in is not the same ownership as the bank.
Right.
He has an interest in both.
Yes.
Yes.
But. Your involvement with the bank, it has nothing to do with Steve Albright's ownership or interest in this land.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood that and.
You know, I, I think, um, from my own point of view, yeah, there, there is no uh conflict of interest there. Uh, from my research as we were talking, okay, can the individual object to it saying he, you know, it's just recently purchased for profiteering? Uh, I noticed that he purchased his ground two thousand one and all he purchased their ground in two thousand three. So, you know, granted, anyone that purchases investment ground price hopes it goes up in value someday, but it certainly wasn't in reaction to. You know, I'm gonna buy it now, but it's next year the city's doing something. I mean, yeah, he's owned his ground about two years less than the guy that was, individual who was up here talking.
I would also like to add a clarification that when we started doing research, updating our comprehensive plan, that was several years ago. Paris, that was adopted in twenty twenty three. Correct. Uh, we started looking at transportation planning even before that. When we first started to approach property owners, it was well past all of that planning that identified that as a critical location for a future interchange. When that landowner first became aware, that was. I'm gonna say late twenty twenty three. So to think that there was some effort to go out there because of that property owner is just simply not true. Another point, uh, that was made is that there might not be develop, development there for ten to fifteen years from now. And that could be true. The issue is with that is, is that it takes seven to ten years. For the process to go through to be able to get started on building. The interchange. So it's gonna be seven to ten years before anything's gonna happen out there with that interchange. So. We're, we're just trying to plan ahead so that we can get out there and, and there's no reason for the city to start that process and the work. If that interchange is not gonna be within the city limits.
And it's gotta be approved by the federal government, so I mean, there's no occurrences that's ever gonna be.
We're trying to do the proper. Steps in order for that to happen. Yes. Okay. Other comments, discussions?
Well, I do wanna go over some stuff.
Okay, go, go, Lon, you go ahead.
Okay, I, I think it's important to uh talk about, first of all, we mentioned annexation agreements. Uh, there really isn't zoning guarantees and what those annexation agreements would look like and uh. You know, there are some people here that have seen them, some that haven't because they're not in the annexation area, but basically just uh, the, the city would approach the owners and say, what do you do on your property? So if they're, uh, if they like to hunt, we put in the annexation agreement that they'll continue to hunt. If they like to strap, they can do that. If they like to burn their fields, they can burn their fields. If they like to collect tractors out and. And storm outside in the back twenty, they can do that. If they're running a construction business out of a, a lot or an entrance onto a field, you know, they can continue doing that because. And really, it was kinda carved vantage saying, okay, what do you do? Because really, what the goal was, was not to go out there and affect how those owners use their property. Uh, I think the majority of the property owners aren't thinking, okay, I'm gonna develop. This is my goal. I think the majority of the property owners though do recognize that there's probably more people knocking on their doors wanting to buy their property every day. And even though they say no today, they like to know that their heirs, their kids, maybe them when they decide to retire. Have the ability to sell it for a better price than what maybe they paid for it. And uh, and what those annexation agreements say is that as long as you wanna continue doing what you're doing, you can, can you continue doing it? The only time those rights end would be if that owner or someone who bought it from, because it stays with the land. So if someone inherits it or they sell it to somebody else, those rights to not do anything stay with the ground. And the only time that those rights would be lost is an owner that property came in and voluntarily wanted to rezone. They came and said, hey, we wanna put in housing here, which is their right to do. They own the property. At that point in time, they would lose the rights. But in the meantime, what they're gaining is they're, they're gaining, first of all, uh, being. Members of the community, they're gaining, they're gaining marketability and value of their ground, and people outside are also gaining that same value. I mean, uh, but that being said, they were, they uniformly seem to recognize, um. The value of doing that. And also there isn't a lot of downside. Like I say, with the annexation agreements, they can continue on. Their kids can continue on, their grandkids can continue on without ever changing. And uh, I think they recognize that. Not to mention also, they would pick up the rights if they wanted to to have, you know, ambulance service out there, fire service out there and everything like that. Because uh, you know, things are changing out there with regards to that in rural areas. Um, now, with regards to this annexation, like we discussed, it is under eighty twenty, so kinda wanted to discuss that also, what's how those rules work. Uh, first of all, to be valid annexation, you have to have uh connectivity or you have to connect to the city that is uh, is annexing. So, uh, as long as all the ground is connected and one contiguous thing, that's one step of getting to the annex. Because obviously you can't jump five miles that way and annex ground that's not connected to your city. So that's kinda elementary, but it's not. I mean, that's part of the rules that they look at. Uh, and that can, line of connectivity under the law can be a min, has to be a minimum of fifty feet. Um, that's not favored, but Iowa statute says you can't say, okay, you're connected at a point. And you can annex on it. You've got to have some connectivity there. So there's a fifty foot requirement on that. Uh, with regards to voluntary annexation, the reason why this has some more scrutiny to it is, uh, that's a look at whether you're within a. Uh, I also look at whether you're within a certain distance of another city, so if you're within a development area of another city. Uh, that those other cities also have a chance to take a look at this, and that's why it goes before the city development board because they take into account maybe competing interests, things like that, so. You know, a lot of times when you hear of annexations or read about them in the news, usually it's, you know, Joaquin and Clyde fighting over an area or something like that, in this case, we don't have that, I mean, we've gotten. Let uh letters of recommendation from both uh uh city coming and from Warren County, and both them have provided letters of recommendation supporting this. So then getting on to the eighty twenty, uh what meaning that if you remember what we said is that it can still be considered a voluntary annexation. Uh, when up to twenty percent of the property within the annexation area is not voluntary. In this case, I believe we're right at about ninety six percent of the area with an annexation that is voluntary and there's four percent that's not, so that represents one owner. Uh, and that twenty percent can be included uh within the annexation area. Uh, under two circumstances on the code, one is to avoid creating an island. Uh, I I don't believe there's an issue here, what an island is is you can't, for instance, annex all the way around the farm, not annex farm in the middle, because that creates an island of unannexed area. Uh, that's not an issue here, so we're not talking about islands, uh the other way that a a piece of property could be included in the twenty percent is to create more more uniform boundaries. Okay, so in this case, that's why the city is looking at uh bringing in one farm that's not voluntary because. Uh, that that creates more uniform boundaries, what you look on that is uh. In the same area, basically, it doesn't become a more uniform boundary. If that property is included versus if it's not. In the case that we have right here. If the property was not included. Then the only way the city could have that connectivity that we talked about in the beginning, where I said you have to be connected. The only way that the city could create that connectivity would be to either go north of that property and back down the east, which would take in quite a few residences. And one of the goals was not to take in residents, I imagine, you know, there, I I would guess that, you know, there's somebody here in the audience that would be one of those residents that we if if we avoided this farm, we'd have to go up and around. And take it in that way, or alternatively, you could go to the south of it. Um, right now, there's a little bit of a gap, there's a fifty foot gap, there's a little bit of a gap down there, so the city would have to involuntarily take in more ground to the south on the other side of the middle or on the other side of the river. But in that case, the city really doesn't want to do that because part of annexing is the city taking responsibility for that ground. And beyond the side of the river, there are no plans for being able to get utilities there, it's, I mean, it's difficult, you cross the river, that's the low area of the of the entire area. And if you go, if you try to jump over that river and actually try to service other areas, it it creates major problems and it's a whole new area, I'm not saying it's a hundred years from now, that might not happen, but. In the immediate fifty years, it's, you know, it's just not practical to do it that way. So then, you know, so what you have to do is go back once again to include that twenty percent, you have to. Look at whether it's a more uniform boundary to take that farm right there or to do a southern loop around or to take a northern loop around. Which would create more, you know, moon shaped thing, so, I mean, you do actually look at what the boundary looks like, other things you consider on that is its uniformity with. Existing conditions, so is it? Yeah, uh, is it more uniform to have your annexation line on a road that's going to be used in the future, or is it more? Uh, beneficial to have your annexation line along a riverbed that can never be used, because right now there are roads there. And those roads are gonna get busier, I mean, whether this annexation happens or not, we all know those roads are gonna get busier, and those have to be improved. Uh, and to have lines in the annexation area included where those roadways are gonna be, clearly, it makes it easier. For the property owner and for the city or governmental entity that's controlling it to develop those, so those are other items that you look at. Uh, when deciding whether uh including this twenty percent creates a more uniform boundary. If the council feels that it does not create a uniform boundary, then we can include it. That's really your question, and it's in your resolution, the resolution talks about that, and so I want to make sure I have details here so that you really understood what we were looking at. Uh, Mr. Clark's touched on that somewhat, uh, talking about the fifty foot and stuff, but there are, you know, there's a lot of, it's a. Not a necessarily easy concept to understand, but it's it's straight out of the code, and that's what our legislatures have written, and that's what, you know, our our courts have interpreted. It is how that works, so, you know, I and your finding on your resolution, you are finding that there, this creates a more uniform boundary, that if we have the property in there. It creates more uniformity with everything, with utilities, with the boundary, with outlooks, with the roads, everything like that, as opposed to. Trying to take another route where, you know, we don't have voluntary annexation agreements with people in the south or to the north, so if we had to go to the north, like I say, we'd run it in voluntary items. With residences, which we've tried to avoid because I think people get uh understandably so, probably more upset if we're talking about putting your house in the city without you asking. Uh, than we would if it blanked farm field. So with that, um, you know, I uh you reviewed the resolutions that does have.
I just wanted to say something, too. Yeah, thank you for coming tonight, um, those of you who came and. Just a few things to comment on that, you're welcome to come sometime and say some positive things about us as well, if you want. It's an invitation, I want you to know you were heard, um, I don't know what that means in terms of what we will do. Uh, what I heard were people who live there mentioning very practical concerns on the one hand. And just wondering, like, have you thought about this, we live there, have you thought about this, we live there, have you thought about this? And that's very important to me and to us, and. It, I I know that that's only part, but definitely I've got some stuff down, and it's like, okay, have we thought about this and this and this, so thank you for that. And my guess is we've done some thinking on that, but it's helpful for me now, I I I know we can, we can talk about that. Deeper still than that, though, is, I don't know if you're anything like me, but when I'm attached to something strongly, I find. As many reasons as I can possible to support the thing I'm attached to, and I hear you being very attached to the land that you have, that's a big deal. Um, and while Jackie's right, we're just talking about entrance into the city of Norwalk. Um, and that that's what these people have agreed to, there's no guarantees that they're ever gonna sell anyone. But I understand, we've been clear about our intentions as a city, and it's a lot of change. And. If I were in your shoes, I think I might feel many of the same things. I don't know if that's worth saying out loud because we go back and we do this, you're like, well, that was sure nice of Jason to say, um. But you you were heard, and and not just the practical stuff, honestly, some of it is like, okay, whatever, but some of it's really meaningful. Um, but also just, that's where you are, um, that's where you live. And uh that came through loud and clear tonight.
Mayor, I got a couple of comments I'd like to make if I could. Go for it, um, first, I made some notes, okay, so the conversation wasn't wasted here, I've got things in my mind. That I'm gonna kind of keep an eye on if we go forward. But the other thing I want to try to express to everybody here is that as a councilperson, I believe that the largest part of our responsibility is to do this in the city's interest. That's who we represent, right, the people of the city. And so when I look at it, I think about the investment that we've made in that area down there, and it's pretty significant to a farm boy like me, that's a lot of money. And so it would seem. Pretty flippant if we didn't try to do something to protect that investment. You know, to try to have an area that is going to eventually build and pay that investment off to the city, right? I wouldn't be keeping my word to the Zach Fair. And the other thing is that we're growing, we know we're growing, you know, we're growing, and we're one of the fastest growing cities in Iowa. And I doubt that that's gonna slow down anytime soon. So while you look around and you may say, oh, they got empty ground here and empty ground there, why don't they do that, well, you know what, it's probably gonna be something in that empty ground pretty quick. And uh just in the years that I've lived here, I've seen so much change so fast, you know? And I don't see a sign of it slowing down, so I really think it's in the city's best interest. To do this annexation, it was in the city's best interest to make the investment. Because we're investing in the future of our community and and a positive future for it, and I think that's what we need to do, anyway, thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, if I could add on, um, I think some of the comments, you know, uh, were. Around, you know, what's gonna happen out here, what's what's the city planning, what's the city's plans, um, which I think is germane to how we zone things. Um, so just to remind folks, um, when the city does annex ground, we bring ground automatically in as agricultural. Um, and then a rezoning needs to occur to change that to a development type, and that has to be in conformance with the land use plan that. Um, was in earlier in that that presentation, so when there's a commercial area or a single family area, we have to match up with that plan with our zoning. Um, so it does come in as ag, so um I bring that up for two points, one, um, to to inform everyone that that is the majority of the area is intended to come in as ag. Secondly, um, the development interest that the mayor mentioned in his presentation um has requested that they be brought in as our M two district. Um, so if the council wished to do that, um, that would be a motion that they would want to make as part of the annexation approval. Um, the county, the city does have the ability to bring in property as um whatever zoning we choose, as long as it conforms with our land use plan, so.
Tell me exactly where that is.
Um, it's so, for the record a in the the audio recording, it's the legal property that was identified for the Shepler and the Patterson properties. Um, Luke, I did do a quick screen cap and emailed you, um, if you would want to pull that up, um, it is essentially. Um, a hundred and twenty acres ish along um Delaware and then some ground to the south of it. Um, so it's really um really in the kind of far eastern area of our annexation um boundary on the big map here. Um, but uh the city manager can pull that up. Yes, yes, east of the industrial park, that is a good description of it in south.
Is that green square?
Uh, it's entire yellow and the green.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and actually, uh, I apologize, there's a uh, the Shepler uh home parcel is also part of that purchase agreement, um, and I did not get that highlighted. Um, but you can see that's up off of Delaware in the space that's not completely.
I know what you're doing, Jack, I'm gonna see if I can.
Right, I'm a visual person.
Yep, yeah, it'll show better than this.
Let me see if I can.
I slapped Ashley together, I apologize for not having it pulled together for this.
Appreciate you bringing it up, I'm just trying to.
It's gonna take me just a second.
We're gonna sleep beacon, Luke.
What's that?
Might be quicker just to go to beacon.
Well, but I want to have it so that they can see it in terms of where the annexation boundaries are at. I believe generally. Is right this area.
So then, to your point, Luke, Paris. When the time comes, if someone were to make a motion, one of our options would be to move to accept the annexation. With the modification that that designated parcel would be annexed as M two.
That is correct.
Thanks.
Luke, is that, am I pretty close on where I drew?
You have one, it's gonna be impossible for me to tell you where to go, you just missed one piece to the south and west of um that, so not there, that's that square, yep. That basically the whole one, but yeah. Yep.
That helps her, thank you very much.
Other discussion and comments from council or questions? In a nutshell, I think. This is summarized as trying to make the area, some of the area that circled in red there. Much more friendly for commercial. And it will have a dramatic effect on taxes and uh the assessments for the city revenue and will hopefully. Be able to equalize, get us more to a thirty percent commercial, we're in seventy percent residential than what we're currently at fourteen percent. Commercial and night uh eighty six percent residential. Um, I think someone mentioned, you know, taxes are too high and that, this is part of the steps that we're taking to try to get that down.
Yeah, I think that'll, with the development that's coming in, since it's in Warren County and it's in the Norwalk School District. I, you know, Warren County taxes should also probably go down a little bit because of the new valuation. And.
These people in Moses.
School taxes should probably go down a little bit as well because of the new valuation, so, at least I hope. That's the plan at night, I would I would like my property taxes to go down.
Me too, alright.
So, anything else from you guys? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to amend the resolution to bring in Project West as M two, as an M two zoning district.
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay. For the amendment, yeah, so I got a motion by Livingston, a seconded by Cool. Lindsay, would you call the role on that motion?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes, all right.
I would mo- move to approve the annexation as.
Thank you.
Second, okay, so I, do you do you want anything else?
Okay, uh, so I got a motion by Livingston, seconded by Baker. Further discussion?
Yep, that's a couple more things to cover. Uh, sorry, people are probably tired of listening to me talk by now, but the uh. Uh, another thing included in the resolution is transition of taxes, we discussed that earlier, that uh entire annexation area. Uh, whether the residential or agricultural uh properties, including non consenting owners, so everything across across the board that would be in the annexation area will have transition. Transitional taxes for the first ten years, which means that, you know, the difference between what you are, what the properties we pay in the county. Uh, versus coming into the city, the city taxes will be transitionally implemented over a ten year period according to the maximum schedule that's allowed under Iowa law and Iowa code. So that's another thing that's included that the council will be voting for, uh, like we said, there isn't a lot of residential property, so it doesn't have a lot of impact. Uh, but still, it uh it does have impact, and that's a couple of people that are involved with the annexation and property owners and the annexation, every cent counts, and we're, we did do that. You know, finally, uh, the resolution itself, there's a lot of deadlines that we met, a lot of uh publishing, a lot of notices that had to go out, and they are all very. Specifically required under the Iowa code, so the city council is also making findings that all of those uh that all those notices. Got sent out, uh, they were certified in ordinary mailing to probably about most of the people sitting in this room, I would guess. Uh, was required to send out ordinary mailings to all neighboring property owners, I think certified and ordinary mailings went to everybody within the annexation area. Also, uh, counties, uh, neighboring cities. Uh, county attorneys, attorney general, uh, local regional planning, the NPO, I believe it was, uh, had to be notified, all affected utilities. Uh, so there were a lot of notices that went out piles and piles and piles of notices.
Who sends those notices?
We had to send out all those. Uh, your city clerk, Lindsay?
And Lindsay, you represented, you did that?
I did do that.
Thank you very much.
And uh, in packets being sent to the annexation board are all certificates and mailings with that, uh, proofs of service, things like that, so. Um, those 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 have all been made according to what is stated in the resolution.
Just gonna ask him the pages he has left.
I believe I am done, I just want to make sure I got. I believe I am done. I just wanna make sure I got my notes here, what I wanted to say. That's it, I'm good.
Any further discussion by council? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston? Mineki?
Yes, alright, motion carries. So I will, I, I wanna make a comment that I have really, I really appreciate all the work the staff's done. For the annexation. I appreciate that they allowed me to drive the conversations that we had with the landowners. Uh, it was really enjoyable meeting all the landowners in the annexation. So I appreciate, I appreciate the staff on this one.
This is the first time I've been a part of this process, Mayor, and I appreciate all the hard work you did. And was completely shocked at how quickly there were so many yeses. Or voluntary, yeah. I just didn't, didn't expect that. So. I didn't know what to expect for sure. I just didn't expect that.
I think that surprised a lot of people. Item six C on the agenda. Is a public hearing regarding text amendments. To the zoning ordinance for the following, zoning petitions, political and temporary signs, residential architectural standards, zoning district titles. City owned walls and fences and the amendment process for planned unit developments. So we'll open up public hearing at seven eleven P M. There are several items that community development staff have been tracking with intent to update the minor zoning ordinance. Luke Paris, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, so we've got five with this item that are all things that we as staff feel like we need to update. Either they are things that are administrative and we wanna clean up, or there's some things that are. Yep.
Folks, I appreciate that you wanna chat. We're trying to have a meeting. If you need to talk, Mister, Mister Clark.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Uh, Luke, let's pause.
I can do that.
Let's, let's recess for four, four or five minutes. I'll let everybody get out of here that wants to.
Next, I actually listen to the people who live there.
It's gonna go just north of there.
Yeah, what'll happen is it's gonna run along the north side of that. And then it's gradually gonna also, it's gonna, it'll follow the rivers as long as it can, but then also you know.
He's about ready to go now.
Yep.
Okay, here we go. Luke, we're talking about. Tracking and intense update and amend our zoning ordinance.
Yes, so we've got five items on this amendment. There are five items that we believe we have to or should consider. Uh, either through state changes or just things that we think are good things to clean up. The first one, I'll run through these briefly. Um, if you want me to go into any more details with them, I'm happy to do that. Uh, but the first one is zoning petitions. Um, when we had our apartment project. Come through with the legacy circle apartments, we discovered our petition language did not match with the state code. And that caused a little bit of confusion about how we measured boundaries and everything. And so we said at that time that the next time we did one of these. Uh, updates, we would correct that. Um, so simply we're amending our code to match the state language. And that was recommended by Jim. Um, number two, residential architectural standards. State House File twenty-three eighty-eight was passed recently, which restricts cities abilities to regulate materials on residential buildings. It's applicable to single family homes, duplexes, townhomes and apartments and condos with a maximum of twelve units per building, which is important. We did a review of our code and determined that we didn't really need to do anything with the, um, single family and townhomes and such. But we did need to do something with apartments because we had some, uh, that's really the first level that our architectural standard kicking is on apartment buildings. So this ordinance creates two categories, one for apartments that are twelve units or less. And it has no restrictions similar to a single family home. And then it has a, our current standards would apply to. Any apartment building with twelve units or more. Um, I would note that we've not had a proposed apartment building in Norwalk. That is twelve units or less. Though I do think we may have some come through with the Hackney Hills project, if you recall, that was those smaller condo buildings. So maybe something we see going forward. Third one, district names consistency. Um, there, throughout the, the years, we've updated some of our zoning districts and changed some names. And there's a section of the zoning code that is a table of all the names. Uh, simply, we never updated those names when we updated districts. This is just cleaning that up. Fourth one, exempting city owned walls from height and setback requirements. Um, as part of our Highway twenty-eight wall project, we identified some areas that we wouldn't typically allow a wall. Um, of that six foot height. Um, so we, uh, simply are giving ourselves the right to, uh, be exempted from our own requirements. To have uniformity on that Highway twenty-eight wall. And then lastly, the amendment process for P U D. Um, currently, right now, we treat a P U D like a zoning amendment. And it always comes to you guys as a public hearing, goes from planning zoning, you initiate it, we treat it like any other zone. Our P U D ordinance technically gives staff the right to approve minor P U D amendments. Administratively. Um, we have always felt that that is a change to zoning. And that it had, should have some kind of public discussion. So we've always brought those forward to you. This amendment simply removes our ability to do administrative approval of that and says that all of these changes to P U Ds will be zoning amendments going forward. Not really changed our procedure, but just changed the ordinance. Uh, so with that, take any questions?
Basically, you wanna bring things in line with the way you really do business.
Correct.
Well, that seemed reasonable.
Thank you.
Open it up for any public comment? Uh, Lindsay, have we received any oral remarks comments on this item?
We have not.
Alright. Uh, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven twenty-eight P M. Item six D is the first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Norwalk, Iowa to the zoning. Zoning petitions, residential architectural standards, district names, city owned walls and fences and P U D amendments. So we just had a public hearing on this. Uh, for the zoning ordinance change. Luke, do you have anything else?
Um, just really hit on like how zoning, uh, currently handles a tattoo studio. Oh wait, um, did I jump ahead? I'm sorry. No, I don't have anything on the other. I'm trying to just, yeah.
I like the additional five foot buffer. One that is, uh, that we're. I saw it both in and out.
The additional five foot buffer.
The additional five foot.
For the fences?
Yeah.
That will be, uh, uh, two more items from now. We'll be talking about that fences. This one, we're just talking about city fences.
The city fence, got it.
Yep, okay.
Motion.
Motion. Okay. One second.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion by Baker, second by Mineki for first reading. Any further discussions? Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston? Mineki?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item six is a public hearing regarding classification of tattoo studios in zoning districts. We'll open up the public hearing at six twenty-nine P M. Oh, sorry, seven twenty-nine P M.
Bingo.
Man.
When you're having fun.
Our, our previous, our previous. Our, our previous, our previous public hearing kind of wore me out. Uh, currently, we don't have tattoo studios classified in any zoning district, so this is gonna change. This change is gonna classify tattoo studios as C two. Luke, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep, so the way it works right now is we define tattoo studio. And actually body piercing studio, they're considered the same thing. We define them, but they're not classified in any zoning district. And our zoning ordinance says that in those situations, they're considered an unclassified use. Which can be approved in any zoning district with issuance of a special use permit. So in the past, we've had, I believe, three requests that have gone to our board of adjustment for special use permits. They've all been approved for tattoo studios and those were in commercial districts. The during each one of those staff. Walked our folks, the applicants through that, we had questions from the applicants about why it needs a special use permit. Our board of adjustment and our P and Z at times have questioned why it's not allowed in certain districts. So we've always kind of held on to this one as. An item to bring up at some point when we had some of these other zoning topics to discuss. So that's what we did here, just wanted to bring it forward as a discussion topic of moving it into the C two district. Which would then allow it by right in the C two district as well as the C three, M one and M two districts. So yeah, that's the gist of it, P and Z did apologize and I mentioned on the past item, they've recommended that as well. P and Z did consider this at their December ninth meeting and recommended approval of the amendment.
We'll have a effort, any public comment on this item? Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments?
We did, we received, it's in front of you tonight, an email from Anthony Samuelson in favor of. Yeah, of this item.
Good.
Do you want to read it? I mean.
I don't, we, I think we all received it.
I think everybody got it. We're okay. Anything else? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven thirty-one P M. Item six F is the first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Norwalk Iowa. Permit tattoo studios as a use in the C two community commercial zoning district. So we just had a public hearing on this zoning ordinance change. Luke, do you have anything to add?
Nothing new.
All right, any discussion comments from council?
Can you remind me what C two is?
It is our community commercial, so it's kind of our catchall commercial. Most of highway twenty-eight is community commercial. The areas where we have more intense things like a gas station or something would jump up to C three. But for the most part, your. Yeah, any of the retail buildings along there are gonna be C two. Yep.
All right, motion by Livingston for the first reading, second by Meineke, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Livingston. Meineke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
All right, motion carries, item six G, it's public hearing regarding requirements for corner lot fences, so we'll open up public hearing at seven thirty-two P M. Luke Ferris, I'm just gonna turn this over to you.
Yeah, and I'm gonna apologize in advance because there's no good way to talk about this. There's no good terminology to talk about the different corner fence types.
That's why I just turned it.
Um, so stop me and ask questions. Fences, so the first thing to know is. A corner lot has street on two sides, that technically means it has two front yards per zoning. Any street frontage that's long a street is a front yard. Commonly though, people that own homes tend to have their house front to one lot in their driveway on one side. And then they tend to consider the other side that's technically front yard to be their side yard. Eight years ago, when I was doing zoning administration, we commonly had concerns from property owners on. Corner lots that they couldn't build a fence into their side yard, which is was technically a front yard. So our zoning at that time, we made a change to say that a six foot privacy fence could go. Fifteen foot into that side front yard again, it's gonna start getting confusing because side front yard, right? So Luke, if you could go down to page two is a good example of one more. This, so this property that's highlighted is a good example of one that conforms to our current code. It's a corner lot, it has a kind of front yard that goes out to the kind of. I guess we'll say east there and then to the south is what they would consider their side yard. And we allow that fence to go fifteen foot off of their house or within fifteen foot of the property line. So you can see there kind of divides that spot.
Let shadows fifteen foot out from the top space.
Yep, yep, and then it's also fifteen foot from the blue line or the sidewalk, which is essentially the property line. So. As just as we had concerns and complaints from our residents when we didn't allow what's on the screen right now. We also continue to have concerns and complaints from residents that they feel like they don't get to use all of their property in these situations. And they would like to have their fence come closer to a sidewalk in these corner lot scenarios. So we as staff kind of looked through some different scenarios. I'm gonna call this one an end of corner lot because it's kind of the end of a block. And you see it's backyard to the west backs up to another backyard of a house. And they're kind of, they're kind of opposing each other, right? We reasoned as staff that in this end corner lot scenario, that it might make sense that we would allow a fence go closer to the sidewalk. If you scroll down to page three, the second image on page three. This is a corner lot that isn't an N one, right, it's kind of like. It's not really mid block, I don't know what you call this, to be honest, it's. It's a corner lot that has a the front of somebody's house to the back and the front of somebody's house to the side, right? In those scenarios, we get a little concerned about that. That fence maybe going all the way to the sidewalk to the north. Because it potentially blocks that guy to the east's view shed out of his driveway when he's backing out and all of that stuff. So in this scenario, we felt like. We don't wanna, we don't wanna deviate from that fifteen foot, we should be strict to that fifteen foot. We feel like that gives some good sight distance back down the sidewalk in those scenarios. So the code before you that we took to P and Z would allow, if you go back up to image two. One more. So what we're proposing is, or what we took to P and Z initially was in this scenario where you have this end. Corner line and we put images in the ordinance because it's just easier to understand image wise. But in this scenario, we proposed, we would let the fence of six foot five privacy fence go all the way to the sidewalk on the side front yard. P and Z looked at that, had a lot of good deliberation on it. I should have made Elliot come to this because he was able to describe it way better than I was, he gave me notes and I'm still flubbing through it. P and Z did discuss it and they felt like right up against the sidewalk was still a bit too much, it was gonna maybe create some corners and stuff. They are recommending approved with a recommendation that. The fence be allowed to be five foot off the property line. Or a sidewalk essentially, so there would still be a little bit of separation between the sidewalk and the fence. It wouldn't be right up against the sidewalk and so that is P and Z's recommendation is. To allow fences to go a little bit farther into those side front yards in these end of block scenarios.
But not all the way to the side.
But not all the way to the side, five foot away.
Thank you.
Yep.
Over it up, public comment?
So that's, I'm sorry, just.
Go for it.
That's the only change is as it affects this.
Yes. Yep. So.
Maybe I missed this.
Well, just another thing to clarify is in the actual ordinance itself, as it is presented to the council. It says it allows it to go to the property line. So your guys is if you wanted to accept the P and Z's recommendation, we need your motion to to amend it to that five foot.
And then again, I think, right, just so. It would allow the fence to go. Five foot or not to the sidewalk. To where, to the back of the house?
To, to, to up to the front, the, the other front setback line, which would be the. We called the front building line, so in this scenario, it'd be the front facade of the house when it's facing to the east.
So if you go back to that previous picture. That where that shadow is, you could run it up to the front of the house, basically.
Yes, and they could do that at the fifteen foot wide now.
So all the way up here.
Yep.
And it would continue to that.
Yep.
That's what the proposal is.
Yes.
Can you? Sorry, and it would continue to what?
I'm gonna try.
I think Luke's gonna draw this.
I'm gonna try. So you're saying it would go up to here?
Yes.
Out to five feet.
That's it.
I hope.
They won't be that wiggling, they'll do it in a straight line.
Does it have to be a straight?
Oh, I make fun, but I couldn't do it either.
Well, that one goes all the way into that block. I don't know if I like this.
There's a reason that we're at fifteen feet, right?
Yep, and so just to clarify too, Luke, if you'll draw. Sorry. No, I just want to make sure. Right now, that fence in that scenario could go all the way to the front of the house there. At fifteen foot from the property line. So you're already able to go that far up, this doesn't change that.
And so does it also then?
That's kind of.
It's also on the other side of the house?
So like to the north on this side? On the neighboring side, that one's just treated as a side yard and those can go right to a property line.
Okay, but up as far as the front of the house?
Yes, yes, yep.
All right.
So there's a reason we're at fifteen feet.
Yeah, yeah, you can't.
George, I'm sorry.
You can't put the house, the front of the house behind it.
Yeah, and caveat to that, you can if you do a four foot fence, you can have four foot fences in your front yard. You just can't have a six foot fence in your front yard.
So the concern is visibility for traffic. And now I got a hunch, that's why we ended up at fifteen feet.
Yes.
Years ago. So what's different now that we don't need fifteen feet of visibility for traffic?
Our thought was with in this scenario where it's this end of block thing. You don't have, you know, your, your traffic is off of the streets on either end. And they've already got a, a good enough view shed through there. The real concern was on if you went back town to page three Luke and the, the bottom image of that. Is a scenario like this where the backyard of that highlighted house backs up to the front of the house. On that side, if you were to look draw a fence around that, maybe that helps kind of illustrate some of that.
The driveways on both sides would be blocked by the view.
Yeah.
But on the page two picture, there's no driveway that could be blocked by the view.
Yeah. So in that scenario, we were kind of concerned about what would happen with that guy's view back down the sidewalk, primarily the sidewalk. Thinking about kids on bikes and stuff like.
That has a fifteen foot.
Yep, so that one would maintain at that fifteen foot, which would kind of be half of that setback if you redo it.
Well, when it's.
So go back up to the other one. Did we go back up to the other house?
There you go back up.
The one that's on the.
Yeah.
End of the block.
End of block.
Okay, so. What's different about this, you got a street intersection. You got a driveway and you got sidewalk. So what's different now?
I think it's just the proximity to it. The street, when you're coming down the street, first you're, you're. Coming up to a crosswalk, you be, I think people tend to be more aware of things happening. And you know, looking down the street to make that turn as opposed to somebody backing out of their driveway. And then again, just the proximity like. In, in the previous scenario, that there would be the potential for a driveway to be one foot off of that fence. In that scenario, we looked at, it happened to be on the other side of that lot, but. Our code allows a driveway to be up to one foot from a property line, so you could have fence. Up to the property line, one foot and then driveway, which in that scenario.
Which would be the neighbor's fence, basically.
Yep. So. So really, I think it's, it's a proximity thing, I think in the end of block scenario, you just have more room. From those side streets to look down the street and see what's coming and what's not. Yeah.
Any public comment? Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments?
We have not.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven forty-four P M. Six H is a first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Norwalk Iowa regarding requirements for fences on corner and double frontage lots. Just had a public hearing for this zoning ordinance change, Luke, do you have anything else to add?
Just from the staff's perspective, we brought this to you because we've gotten a lot of comments from people that live on these things. We're really okay with it being either way, we'll continue to enforce it the way it is now. But just when we keep hearing comments from folks, you know, we want to bring that to you, make it you aware of it and give you an option if you didn't want to change something.
And you spoke of an amendment, what, what is that again?
The amendment would be to allow it within five feet of the property line.
Okay. Not all the way, not all the way to the sidewalk, five feet. So does anybody want to make that amendment?
I will make that amendment. Motion for that.
Anybody want to second it? Okay, so I got a motion by Baker to amend the ordinance as presented to allow.
P and Z.
P and Z's for five foot. Not on the property. Okay, and a second by Meineke. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
You betcha.
Is it just for end? Corner lots?
Um, let me, let me get, sorry, I tabbed over. The, the actual like ordinance does not refer to it that way. It says in situations where two corner lots are butt and where the primary dwelling entry entries face in diametrically opposite directions. Such as example in exhibit, example in figure A, which shows that what I termed end of block scenario. It says fences not exceeding six feet in height may extend to the property line. We would amend that to say may extend to within five feet of the property line within the front yard that is being used as a side yard.
And that's a in the, in the lot, corner lots where there's no house between.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, councilmember Livingston. Meineke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Cool.
No.
All right, that motion carries. So then can I get a motion to approve the first reading as amended? Yes, or motion. And. And a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Meineke for first reading as amended, seconded by Baker, further discussion?
Yeah, so. To Lindsay's question. I just want to make sure that. The description. Is what we're actually talking about.
So where are you at in there so I can show them?
It's page five of six. Just as. To throw more confusion to this, and I apologize to do that. I didn't bring this up because I, I feel like we addressed it in this language, but it's the language is written as such. Because there are times where these two lots, if you go down to the, the. The lots there, if you scroll down just a little bit more, Luke. There are times where one lot might have a driveway to the north. Because we don't dictate where your driveway is, so if you're on a corner lot, you get to pick where you want your driveway. So there are situations like this that are that end of block scenario where one driveway goes to the east, but one goes to the north. And in that scenario, we wouldn't want. It, we, it's the same issue as on the other image where they weren't back to back like that, right, and now it becomes back to side. So trying to craft the language to reflect that was.
How did you do that?
Diometrically opposite directions.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Right, two corner lots a butt, so I don't know how that cannot be an end, that's what I was like. Lindsay's question was giving end lots, I don't know how that cannot be an end of the road. Right?
Right, and, and I don't think it could be, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm good.
Yes.
Fine, thank you.
All right.
I just had to talk a trip.
Yep.
They have those classes of aims, do they?
Any other discussion? Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Meineke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool.
No.
All right, motion carries, item six I. Before you go on. Ferris, I can't wait for you to come to my property. On this corner lot. And hopefully you tell me we cannot have a fence anywhere because my wife wants one and I don't.
I'll do that. I'll do that if you.
Sorry, I.
Well, what a conflict of interest.
I was saying that as a citizen, not anywhere up here.
You said that about your wife. Yeah. I'm saying. I'm just saying.
Hopefully she will watch this.
Nelson. I'll kill for you.
Item six I. Resolution approving the second consideration of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Norwalk, Iowa by adding and enacting thereto a new section to chapter one oh four to establish a northeast service area benefited sewer district and to adopt connection fees therein. So Norwalk has built a pumping station along Eightieth and is now going to establish a sewer district to help pay for that pumping station associated piping. Uh, project is opening up over three hundred acres for development. Uh, with sewer now available, so the total estimated cost is two million dollars with the fees proposed at sixty-five hundred dollars per acre, followed by an annual increase of one hundred dollars per acre. Uh, I should also add that within a portion of the sewer district is a development by Hubble, and we have an agreement with Hubble regarding a lift station. Uh, staff's working, still working with Hubble to reconcile the benefit of sewer district and the development agreement. Uh, you may recall that our initial plans were for a smaller lift station to serve an isolated area. Uh, but we revised our approach to serve a larger area, thinking long-term. Tony, you got anything?
Very well summarized, Mayor, nothing else to add from me.
Thank you.
Uh, any discussion, uh, comments from council? Or public comment? Can I get a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Motion by Brown, seconded by Livingston, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Alright, motion carries, item six J is resolution approving a contract with Vickers Consulting Services to apply for a twenty twenty-four staffing for adequate fire and emergency response or safer grant, uh, for the fire department. So we did not get the safer grant that we applied for last year, which is too bad.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're gonna go after it again.
Correct.
Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so just like the mayor said, we did apply for this grant, um, it's federally funded grant, uh, last year, we, we did get a denial letter. So the request is to, um, well, when we applied last year, we did contract with a grant writing service. And part of the agreement is that if we were, uh, denied, you could reapply the next year, um, for a reduced rate. Um, it was originally, I think, twelve hundred dollars last year, and it's a hundred dollars to resubmit, cause they already have all of our information. So they just kinda touch it up and put in new data. Um, just for information, I did kinda do some research, um, on the FEMA website. There was only one fire department in the state of Iowa that did receive a safer grant. It was, uh, North Liberty, and they got, uh, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, I think. Um, so it was, it seemed like it was kind of a long shot again, um, since there was only one fire department in the state of Iowa. But because of that reduced rate, because of our need for, um, higher in the future, uh, I think it'd be a good idea for us to go ahead and take advantage of that.
Well, if there's a good comparison city.
Yeah.
For Norwalk, it would be North Liberty.
Yeah, exactly, and I knew that that was kind of a comparable city, so it made me feel like maybe we were right there, um.
Just on the cusp.
Just on the cusp, so maybe we'll get lucky this next round. I'm happy to answer.
Do you have an opportunity to visit with, like, our congressional delegation and our senators?
Yeah, so, uh, Luke and Mayor, they had spoken to, um, representatives, we'd reached out to those offices, and we did submit letters of support from uh, Miller Meeks, um, Grassley's office. And ours, yep, they all sent letters of support for us last year, and we'll reach out to them again for sure.
Other discussion? Questions, discussion? Public comment?
Motion? Is there a public hearing? Motion.
Alright. Motion by Livingston, seconded by Minneke, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown? Cool?
Yes.
Livingston? Minneke?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Item six K is resolution in, resolution initiating an amendment to the Norwalk zoning ordinance to create the Norwalk Technology and Industrial enda- no, Technology and Industry Overlay District. So the developers for Project West have advised us that we can improve the marketability of Norwalk if we establish a technology and industry overlay district, and it needs to be called that. Uh, within their industry, if you don't have an overlay district and call it an overlay district, will likely be overlooked for development. Uh, with that said, the overlay district allows us to be more agile and efficient during the development phase of a project, and I believe that it's gonna be pretty unique in the state of Iowa. Got anything to add, Holly?
Um, I would just say that being such a brand-new type of a project for our community or city, um, it's really good to have such a great group to work with that can tell us, this is what, um, the industry experts, um, the experience that they have, what's working, what people are looking for in these industries. So I feel really blessed that we have the partners that we have right now working, um, on that particular piece of land, and as of right now, I mean, we've been working with them for at least a year, um, and they've been great to work with. And they came to us through, you know, our marketing of that area and our relationship with Mid-American Energy in the state of Iowa and the Greater Des Moines partnership. So they, they knew about our site and our area down there because of everything that we've all done, um, to prepare and make, make people aware of that land. So they've been great to work with, the timing right now is moving right along with, um, tonight, you know, we did the, uh, the annexation and zoning for them, and then as they finish up their purchase agreement on the land, they should close on that right about the same time that hopefully the state is approving everything with the annexation. So things, all the pieces are really kinda falling into place, and this, this overlay district is really just something that's super important in the tech and data industries right now, um, nationwide, cause as the mayor said, it's sort of like a certified site, the way we look at it in terms of, that's what that industry knows what to look for, and they know what it means. So when they go looking for these giant sites, um, they know that this process is streamlined, they know exactly what to expect, so it's just, uh, that's right top of the list, so.
Awesome. Luke, you got anything to add?
Um, just on top of that, you know, we've worked with this project for, you know, quite a while and have had a lot of good interactions and everything. Um, uh, but in addition to them giving us information on this, um, we did go out independently, look at other districts, look at what this would be, um, Jim and I spent a lot of time crafting on what this would look like for Norwalk. Um, and I think we've got a pretty unique thing for Iowa, I think we've got a pretty unique thing for what a lot of these things are, for how we can approve it for our community, have it be what it needs to be for the industry, and still maintain, um, what we value in our processes. So, um, excited to have further discussions on it and kinda unveil the whole thing, but um, for now, we're just asking for that initiation, so we can begin the public process.
Awesome. Any discussion, questions, comments from council?
But just note that the agenda statement, um, was slightly modified by today's action that we, uh, approved annexation of twenty-nine hundred acres.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, any other discussion? Or public comment?
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, item six L is a resolution to authorize City of Norwalk to give notice to Bravo Des Moines Incorporated of his intent to withdraw from the twenty-eight E agreement. So it's sad that we're asking council to take this action. Uh, but House File seven eighteen has us looking at external organizations and our funding of those organizations. I think investing in arts and culture is important to the overall health of the community. Uh, but we're in an environment where we're being asked to shrink our local government and to find other revenue sources. Uh, that causes us to make decisions like whether to begin funding Catch Des Moines, which will funnel people to Norwalk to stay in our hotels, eat and shop locally, which helps our local businesses and increases city revenue, or to fund Bravo. Uh, I know we've gotten quite a few thank you emails lately from, from the Bravo partners. Uh, I think that might be in response to Altoona's decision to withdraw from the twenty-eight E agreement as well.
Annually, thank us. I mean.
Yeah.
It might be, but they always, yeah, he always gets.
They do. Uh, this will begin an eighteen-month. Uh, so we, 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 it's an eighteen-month notice for the withdrawal.
Wow, so we, we will have to fund that in fiscal year twenty-six still?
Yes. Yeah. Uh, Holly, you got anything to add?
Um, just that both of our hotels and the sports campus development groups have all repeatedly asked that we take a look at joining Catch Des Moines because of the success they've seen with them and their other projects and around the metro areas, and almost to the point of it being like a critical piece that they really need to have to help fill their rooms and help fill the spaces during off-seasons, um, and we've heard nothing but great things about the things that they do, so like the mayor said, we just have to make those tough choices, cause we can't do them all, um, and we need to take on the types of memberships now that have a financial return on investment.
Discussion, questions, comments through council?
The only comment I'd make, Mayor, is that it's unfortunate we can't afford to do both.
Yeah.
But, uh, fate has put us in a position where we can't. And so that's where we find ourselves.
Yep. True. Okay, I got a motion from Baker, a second by Livingston. Uh, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, item six M. It's final reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Norwalk, Iowa to address building permit expiration and refunds. These changes are being presented due to removal of residential tax abatement. Luke, you got anything to add?
Nothing there.
Any discussion, questions, council, or public comment?
Have you gotten, uh, an additional balloon coming up or anything?
They are, my numbers are up for December, from where they are. Not, not, oh, I should've looked up that number. Maybe double, but double would be like, we normally get like nine to ten, so we're like at twenty, like, so it's not been as intense as we maybe were worried about, but it has been.
Good, good, thanks.
Alright. Can I get a motion to approve the third and final reading?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Minneke, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries, item six N. It's final reading of an ordinance amending chapter one seventy-seven rates and fees of the Norwalk Municipal Code, providing for the addition of fees for the Norwalk Fieldhouse. So these changes are to add a category for the Norwalk schools to include no overall rental fee, but there will be costs for staffing the facility. This is similar to what school districts, what the school districts has done for the city for many years, uh, when we've used their facilities. There are a couple points I'd like to express for council consideration. First, you need to keep in mind that the City State Bank Fieldhouse was built with an emphasis on economic development. Uh, I hope that this fee reduction doesn't edge out the use of our facility for tournaments where we bring people to our community uh, to support local business. Uh, this ties with our change to being, uh, to supporting Catch Des Moines. Uh, City Manager and I also wanna note that this topic came up at a city school work group meeting, and the school officials that were present expressed there is, uh, no expectation of fee waivers or reductions. They expressed an understanding that we have a facility to operate, and our goal is to self-sustain the operations without tax subsidy. Uh, we love supporting our school, and we certainly recognize all that they've done for us in the past. Uh, we just need to wear, be aware of unintended, unintended consequences, certainly. Uh, Robert, you got anything to add? Okay. Uh, any discussion, question, comments from council or public comment?
I'm just, like, I don't like the name, but, um, this would be specifically for Norwalk schools and Norwalk school affiliated activities, because there's a line in here that says Park and Rec Staff also had a couple other tournament organizations request fee waivers. We're not talking about other organizations, we're just talking about the school.
Just the school.
Okay, we're good with that. As long as, right, yeah, as long as we keep it within reason, because.
Yes.
And it's also has to initially be approved by the school.
Yeah, the AD's office.
AD's office.
Yeah.
Good points. Any, any public comment? Uh, can I get a motion to approve third reading?
Motion.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Livingston, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Alright, motion carries, item seven, future agenda items. So the purpose for this is for council to give direction to staff by way of motion to have items placed on future agendas, not for discussion, the merits of the subject matters, it's just to get it on the agenda so that we can discuss the merits of the subject matter. Any future agenda items?
Definitely, uh, the all-important beggars night, the rest of the metro is going to Halloween night. If we remain on the night before Halloween, we will be all alone. Even David.
Okay.
Even Pleasant Hill?
One of them is going, I don't remember which one, is going to the Saturday night before Halloween.
Bond Durant knows that, I think there's two that.
Is that two of them? Yeah. We didn't do a survey, uh, they all did, and they just sent out a news release. Uh, it doesn't mention that we're, um, doing it, it just says other communities may also may also, uh, change it.
Okay, I'm just, so I'm just confused by what you said.
Okay.
I don't necessarily have a opinion, either way, I'm just confused by what you said.
Yeah.
Cause I thought you said every community in the metro is going to this, but then I thought you just said other communities might. So I don't know.
There were a couple, uh, the metro, uh, the close metro, they are going to they're going to the night.
Water at Granger, Winter Heights, I think it says.
What? There were other, um, yeah, Urbendale, West Des Moines, Waki, Des Moines, Johnston, Pleasant Hill.
Those are going to the thirty-first.
Yes, they're going to Halloween night. And they, since I said, I brought it up and they did, we didn't have an interest, I, they just put it, and others might, so I.
Now I understand, thank you for clarifying.
Um, so we need to talk about that and get it decided.
Okay, so I got a motion to put Halloween on the agenda, do I get a second? Beggars night on the agenda, okay?
I'll second that, babe.
Alright, so motion by Baker, seconded by Cool, all those who favor say aye. I suppose same, okay, so we'll get that on.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Very none, we'll go to council inquiries and staff updates. Uh, we'll just go.
Okay, I just have a few items, January sixteenth is when we will do a work session with council, where we will bring a more formal version of the what we are now calling Envision twenty thirty-five, your ten-year vision. Uh, we've gone through that with department heads to help kinda streamline, make sure that we're all on the same page on what those goals are. Even though it seemed pretty clear at the meeting that day. We like to finalize that, put it in a format that then we can start to roll out public. Next thing, budget timeline. Normally by this time, we have, we Gene and I, our finance director, we've put in quite a bit of time meeting with department heads individually, talking about what they wanna do for their budget for the upcoming fiscal year. As you may recall, last year, we found ourselves waiting for official numbers from the county until after the first of the year. So we did a lot of work just to wait. Uh, this time, we felt that because of the impacts of House File seven eighteen, we didn't wanna speculate, because our revenues just don't seem to be as consistent as they used to be. So we have, for the most part, waited to have our meetings with department heads until after January first. Just so you know, if it feels like this year, we are on a more compact timeline, that's the main reason why. But that is forthcoming, uh, we'll jump into that hot and heavy in January. The last thing, uh, expect an upcoming closed session. As you know, when we do union negotiations, we oftentimes come to council as part of those union negotiations and have a closed session. Just giving you a heads up, if you see that closed session on the agenda in the future, it'll be because of those uh, union negotiations. That's what happened.
Alright, Jackie?
No, nothing.
Basin?
Nothing.
Lindsay?
Um, official move-in date for the east side of City Hall will be January sixth. It's exciting, and Holly, I'm sure you noticed, but I hope everybody else noticed that the Christmas lights are back up on the building. You didn't see them? Yeah, so, yay, um, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Robin. Alright, Gene?
Nothing, thank you.
Holly? Chief? Keith?
Nothing.
Uh, Tony?
We have our pre-construction conference for the North River Sewer Project tomorrow morning at city hall. That's all I've got.
Alright, thank you. Luke?
Nothing.
Uh, Ed?
Couple things. Our youngest granddaughter won a beauty competition up in Michigan.
Awesome.
That's when I was up there last few years. Anyway, it was kind of a pleasure, uh, mayor setting the budget up for, uh, metro waste. It's neat because, see, they're not affected by the house file. They're not city, right?
Yeah.
So we played it as close to the vest as we thought reasonably could. We're looking at a five percent budget entry. So we're estimating revenues next year about seventy-five million and expenses of about seventy million. But I thought I'd share with you, you know, how good it felt to be able to just look at honest estimates and not have to do the limbo to make everything fit underneath that artificial shield. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Thank you, George.
Uh, such a lot of works will be officially going that summer thirty-first, so.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think there's a lot of still thinking of how this is all gonna turn out, but it'll, it'll get there.
It'll get there.
Yeah.
I think it's good for the metro.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
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 Agreed.
Brian? When did you say it was gonna be on the sixteenth, the budget process?
Uh, no, January sixteenth is when we have a work session to finalize the, that ten-year vision.
Any idea what that's going to be during the day or evening?
Uh, it'll just be ahead of council, regular council time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing.
Alright, yeah. Uh, thanks for throwing an annexation tonight. I shouldn't make it all the way through. I'll have mentioned that. It's, uh, in all my years, I think this may be one of the most gratifying, biggest projects I've seen. Uh, we're not, certainly not done with yet, but to get to this stage with so many people involved, elected officials or city manager, most department heads, I mean, the hours that have been put into it is incredible. And, uh, to see that teamwork is, is, it was a fun experience. It was a lot of work, but it was kind of enjoyable all the way through if you're, if you're got punishment.
Yeah, it was really neat seeing all the departments come together and if they didn't get along, uh, there's no way this would have happened.
That was a big deal. I mean, that's huge in the history of the city.
Yeah, it is. I mean, the city council is the pivotal day.
Yeah, the city council made a decision tonight that is changed in the future in Norwalk, I believe.
Yes. Uh, so for me, our next step with that is gonna be a city development board meeting. Uh, that will be on January seventh. So I think that's a Microsoft Teams meeting. Uh, for council, if you have not gotten me Luke's review, please do so soon. Uh, and once I get all, once I get all those, I will get those, I'll get Luke's review scheduled onto a meeting. And finally, everybody have Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Alright.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, but he was meeting for us. I do not have to. It's not rooted off of that purpose.
Alright, got a, got a motion to adjourn. Second by Cool, second by, uh, Brown, all of you can ever say aye?
Aye.
Alright, I suppose same. Adjourn, eight fourteen P M.
Hey!
You know, I was in those people's spots. We built our house about three miles up.
That's a nice compliment, actually.
You know, I have. Right, 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 yeah. So, and that's, that's.
It could.
Oh. Merry Christmas, Mark. Thanks for coming.
Nice having citizens.
Absolutely, I know, it's, it goes, it's not unrecognized by me that you're a loyal attendee and the city would be better off.
And I hope your answer is, you're done.
Yeah.
Which was sad. Uh, yeah.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. I agree. And why do you stay informed though? That's the most difficult part.